Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Wareham School Committee. It is June 18th, my middle daughter's birthday. I'm not going to tell you how old she is because then you'll know how old I am. But anyways, June 18th, it is seven o'clock, and the first thing that we have on the agenda is public participation. If anyone would like to address the school committee, would you please step forward to the table with the microphones and identify yourself? Seeing none, we'll move on. Now, we have good news. Madam Superintendent.
I would like to begin by, with our happening video.
She's awesome!
Hi, my name is Dallas Angelina. My friends call me Abby. I'm in second grade at mine for a school. This morning is my teacher. I'm going to talk about teamwork. Teamwork is important in school. We use teamwork every day. We had a school day last week. Our class won a lot of prizes because we worked as a team.
My favorite part of playing football is the water scale. It's very important. I learned how to make my dad's and my sister's.
Great, great. We like a lot of things. My favorite part is the way Preston took the lessons like wrong.
I like starting the ball with the grand, how they came over. And like, they just acted like they were older.
Ever since I've been at the cooperative school, I've learned that I can control my anger better. I've been on over two to try my social.
Hi, I'm Brody Gardner. Today I'm going to be talking about my favorite presentation we did in our classes that night. The Littlest Animal Park was my favorite presentation because it allowed me to learn a lot about animals there, the landforms, and the bodies of water that it had.
In the class, I liked, like, I learned how to like to read more, like, find the books that we read. So I didn't worry anymore now.
Oh, thank God, yeah. I have control of this place and the control system and the administration.
You say, "I like the farm"?
Yeah.
He's great. I really liked how we learned about what you have mental illnesses. We really liked books and novels that helped them. We learned a lot of other books that come handy with psychology and stuff, especially going into high school. It all really comes handy with science courses and stuff, the way the world's progressing towards the science end, so we're not going to be going to change now.
My favorite thing was too, because I get to go up there and watch the evening of the block after I finish.
My favorite thing I've learned this year are all the life lessons Mr. Collins has.
Life lessons. And now, we would like to make the presentations for service. We'd like to ask Mrs. Tobin to come up, please.
Hi. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize Mrs. Sheila Brayley for her 20 years of service as a school nurse. Mrs. Brayley is unique because not only can she be seen doing her everyday school nursing duties and dealing with bumps and bruises as they occur, but you will also see her on a given day helping out at bus duty, lunch duty, and covering in the office. Mrs. Brayley goes above and beyond for the students and families. I would just like to share a few examples with you of what she has done for us. Every February during Dental Health Month, Mrs. Brayley puts together goodie bags for every student in our building, giving them a toothbrush, toothpaste, and a timer, and all of that is done out of her own pocket. Last year, she wanted to teach students about eating healthy, so she went into every classroom and read books about being healthy, but that wasn't enough for her. So her and her husband built this portable greenhouse and a viewfinder, and every student got to plant vegetables, watch them grow, feed them, take care of them, and then every student got to try all the vegetables that they grew. And one of my favorite things that she does, she helps to organize the Giving Tree at the holiday time, and that's where us as a school can help needy families within our school have a better holiday season. So, Mrs. Brayley, on behalf of the students, families, and staff at the East Wareham Early Childhood Center, we congratulate you on 20 years of service, and we thank you.
Is anybody to come forward? Do you see your certificate?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we've got a couple of other presentations to make. It is my pleasure to give this special award to a very special young woman that has been a tremendous service to the Wareham School Committee. She has been there, she has provided invaluable input, she's had opinions, and we really, really do appreciate where she comes from and how she has represented the student body at Wareham Public Schools, especially the high school. So, I know I speak for the rest of the committee, we want to thank you for your service to us. Nicole, it's been our pleasure working with you, and I hope you have a very, very happy future, and you know, there's room on it for next year, too. Thank you, Nicole.
And the next presentation is bittersweet for me because I have the highest regard for this professional. I've had the opportunity to work with her both as a professional administrator and on the school committee, and I can honestly testify to the fact that this individual has done remarkable things in Wareham. She has been the spearhead of so many movements, so many initiatives, and so many curriculum changes that absolutely makes me dizzy. And she's moving on, and hopefully she can have a very, very healthy retirement, because I can just speak for myself, and I know I speak probably for many of the committee members, that we really appreciate your service to Wareham Public Schools. You've been there for us through thick and thin, and we really appreciate everything you've done, not only for us, the school committee, but for all of the children Wareham Public Schools. Janice Rotella, we're going to miss you. Thank you.
It's been my pleasure, and...
Jan?
This is a complete surprise, and I just want to say it's been my pleasure to work with absolutely finest educators I've ever worked with. I've had the privilege of working in four states and 10 districts, and the educators in this district are far and above anyone I've worked with anywhere else. They care about kids, they collaborate, and they want to move forward. So, my very best to the district, thank you, Dr. Sylvia, and the committee, and my very best to our new superintendent, with a year under her belt, now ready to really fly. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Janice. At this time, does anyone on the committee have good news? Yes, Nicole?
So, there's a car wash on Saturday at the fire station from 10:00 to 2:00, and all donations will go to benefit students going on the Costa Rica trip next February, so we'd love to see you there.
I will bring two vehicles.
One at a time, please. Anyone else? Yes, Mrs. Vugan.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, this might not fall under good news, but I think that we all have an opportunity to turn it into good news. There, last night, the, or yesterday, the vote for the override did not pass, and I think that there are many of us here at the table, as well as many people that worked on the five-year plan that went into the argument for the override, are very disappointed by that fact. I think that it's important, though, from a good news standpoint, to recognize the board members that worked well together to be able to have a five-year plan, and it's a good, good five-year plan, and where, if there are any other investments that we can find, where they actually should be put behind. So, again, that, I think, is very, very good news, as well as the amount of work that the superintendent, the town administrator, both of their administrations and their staff put into the information, and also just how well they also work together. And so, I'm seeing this as, not as an ending, I think that there was a lot that came out of this push for an override, and I would just ask that we continue that work, we continue to work together, we continue to take a look at the hard issues that are facing this town, we continue to come up with creative solutions, and just because one piece that we were hoping for didn't pass, that doesn't mean that we can't continue to invest in Wareham and continue to work as hard as we can to make this, to continue to make this the best town that it can be. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Vugan. Anyone else? Mr. Swett? What the heck?
I just gagged myself, so...
You did?
Yes.
Does that mean you want to speak or not?
I'm not speaking.
Okay. Ms. Flaherty, also?
I think I'm also.
One of the pieces of good news that I had, and I thought Mrs. Vugan summed it up beautifully, was something that really was a great weekend, and it was a summer celebration that got kicked off this weekend. And I want to tell you, I've seen an awful lot of historical presentations, and what was done this weekend by local people, as well as militias and groups from across the state and across New England, was absolutely amazing. All day Saturday, we had a battle on the green, and we had a British encampment along with the militia encampment, and we had tours of the Farron Tavern, we had tours, we had demonstrations of the period, kicking off basically the War of 1812 with the British. And then on Sunday, we had the sea invasion of Wareham to seize our mills back in those days, and it was absolutely fantastic. And unfortunately, it's all over because I would like to have it continue, but kudos to the folks that put this on, that did the work, that did the planning, and it really was a great way to kick off the summer celebration. So, if anyone out there went to it, I think that they would attest to the fact that it was really, really well done. So, I think that that's something we can be proud of, and it was very historically correct, too, because, you know, they have to be correct. Anyway, so that was good news. Anyone else? All right, moving on. Minutes of the meeting, June 4th. I'll entertain a motion.
No moves.
I have a motion to accept as presented. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second. Omissions, deletions, corrections. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero. Moving on, Mrs. Rotella, the changes to the district handbook.
Good evening. The superintendent has prepared, and you have received a list of changes that is itemized. I also have given Michelle some background information on the new discipline law that is probably, without a doubt, the most sweeping change in the handbook. I know it's heavy reading, so if you go home wide awake with lots of adrenaline running, you may like to read it tonight, otherwise it may cure insomnia, or both. But you have in front of you the two-page handout regarding changes in the handbook. I do want to preface my remarks by saying that our superintendent has met with an attorney who has reviewed the entire handbook and vetted it in light of new laws and regulations. The changes itemized are there in front of you. If you don't have a copy of the handbook with you, but you have your laptop, it is on the website. So, just very briefly, we'll hit the biggest one first, and this is on page 15, the Student Code of Conduct. The multi-page code of conduct has been replaced with a very deceivingly simple and straightforward comment that under this, the principal still has the change in state law and the addition of 37H and three-quarters. We always had 37H and 37H and a half, and now we have 37H and three-quarters. What is stated in the handbook is that under this, the principal still has the authority to suspend or expel a student under 37H and 37H and a half. However, the principal must make reasonable efforts to notify the parents orally of the disciplinary offense and invite the parents to a meeting to discuss the student's academic performance and behavior, strategies for student engagement, and possible responses to behavior. The discipline is more individualized, and students' services, students' academic services need to continue. I can pause there, or just keep going? Mr. Chair, would you like me to just keep going?
Keep going. There's no questions. Okay, keep going.
Okay. On page 25, bus suspension of bus privileges, change in the law. No due process is needed for bus suspensions. On page 35, the EpiPen, that law has also changed, and that is, the storage of the EpiPen may be kept in a secure but unlocked place as determined by the school nurse, following consideration of the need for storage at places where the student may be most at risk, including but not limited to classrooms and lunchrooms. The Epi may be stored at more than one location or carried by the student when appropriate. EpiPens will be available in the main office at all school buildings. And again, this is a change in the law, and this is giving students access to their own EpiPens, as well as having them readily available. Page 36, and this same wording was changed on page 58, and this is the wording to change service dogs to service animals. And again, this is a change in the regulation to be inclusive of all service animals.
Can you just give me examples of other service animals?
There are. People who use monkeys. There are actually people in a school in North Carolina that have miniature horses.
Thank you.
So, it's...
Just let us make examples. Make sure it's a monster or something.
It's quite intriguing. You didn't say you wanted a miniature horse, though, right?
No.
Okay. Anything else on service animals? On page 59, staff ethics, conflict of interest. This law has been in place for a number of years. All of our faculty, staff, everyone who works for Wareham Schools goes through the conflict of interest law and completes a certificate every three years, and this is just bringing the handbook in line with that regulation, and simply states, "The school committee expects all public employees to be familiar with and hear to the state conflict of interest law, et cetera." Those are the changes. The only thing I would add is that because of the significant changes in 222 and school discipline, the superintendent is planning professional development for staff and has, and our discussions today says that she will be sharing with the school committee that schedule and inviting school committee members to receive the schedule and hear a summary of it afterwards.
Thank you, Mrs. Rotella. Any further discussion on this? I'll now take a motion to accept the district handbook as correct, or as, what? What's the word? As...
Updated.
As updated. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero. Thank you, Mrs. Rotella.
Thank you. That's the quickest handbook acceptance I've done in 10 years, so thank you very much.
Moving along, springs, athletic spring report. Mr. Riedrich and Mr. Palladino.
Hi. I'd like to start out with the welcome. Let's start out with the highlights of the spring season. Our girls' track team was 6-1-1 and had numerous conference champions. Paige Faskins broke the school record in the two-mile. But the most amazing thing I found about the girls' spring track team was they had an 89.5 GPA, and that's for 38 girls. That's pretty outstanding. That's just about an A average. That was incredible to me. The boys' track team, John Irving ended up third in the state in the shot put, and Mason Vasconcellos came within one second of breaking the mile record at Wareham High School. The girls' tennis team, although it didn't have a winning record, had its best record in many, many years, and there were many, many girls on the tennis team, which was a positive thing. We also had a considerable amount of eighth graders, and I think that keeps growing and growing. We had big signups already for the fall, and I don't know how many we've had in the past years, but if it comes close to what we had in signups, it's going to be the biggest since I was here last year, that's for sure. As a group, we rewarded the conference team sportsmanship award, which I was more proud of this year than last year, because last year they gave it to the teams that really were in last place. Didn't happen this year. Three of our teams that won the award were successful teams, so I was pretty happy with the sportsmanship award for the teams. And another highlight would have been the 86.5 overall GPA for 144 student athletes, which I, again, I think is outstanding. And those would have been the highlights of the spring season.
Just regarding the column where it has league, like, if I just pick the first one, girls' tennis, you've got overall 6 and 12, and then league 4 and 10. What is that? What's that?
Well, they had 14 league contests, South Coast Conference.
Okay.
And then they have four non-league games.
Gotcha.
So, that's what happened.
All right. Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Breaking records tonight.
How's that, huh? We're moving right along.
It never happens.
All right, moving right along. I guess we're ready to hear the school improvement plans, and then there's a kind of a new format, so very ambitious to get them all done in one night. We're going to...
Jamie.
And see how well we can do as a committee.
Jamie.
I'm going to ask that the presentations be made at certain points, natural points, we can stop and ask questions. Okay?
Well, why don't you go sit with the superintendent?
Sit here.
I can see.
Mel. Mel, sit here.
Okay. Good evening. One day in one of our administrators' meetings, we were looking at the schedule on how we were going to present our school improvement plans, and I said, "I think we should do it all together," and they looked at me like I had three heads, and they couldn't believe it popped out of my mouth. So, we set up a framework, and I have to tell you that I certainly saw the administrators' gel, work together, and create this product that we're going to be showing you. Everyone has ownership in it, and what we based this on were our four pillars: literacy, mathematics, technology, and safe and secure schools. What we have done, and what our administrators have done, is it will be a continuum of services from pre-K through 12, and we're all focusing on these four pillars. So, not that I know how to go backwards, so we'll just skip right over to this. What will happen will be, tonight, each group will review their FY 1314 plan, we'll be happy to answer any questions, and then we're going to move into the FY 1415 plan. And at the end of the presentation, every school will have covered the four pillars, and it will be moving from one level to another. So, without further introduction, we'll start with the East Early Childhood Center.
Sure, thank you. So, as a goal, all of the teachers, each had, a classroom teacher completed the goal of at least 75% of the preschool students either being able to match, recognize, or name symbols, color shapes, numbers, or letters, and every teacher made that goal. And then, as a school, we participated in year-long activities that included families, teachers coming together to do a book study, and then implementing the things that they've learned throughout the year in different projects, and we had projects that included the community members as well.
When we look, when we take a look back at Deacon's and we realize the work that we had to do this year, what we did is we created the school schedule to accommodate 90 minutes of research, evidence-based, common core instruction for each child inside the school, and also, we have an RTI block of 40 minutes for literacy. We looked at the developments, the common benchmarks, and using the Edwin System, and we put those into place, and each child in every grade level had a common benchmark once every approximately six weeks. We started off with the grade and the G made as well at the beginning and end of the year. We received the PD from DSEC and Close Reading and Differentiated Instruction, and of course, our new reading series, REACH. We implemented the expanded vocabulary in the REACH, and we progress monitored. When we look at mathematics, again, it's the same type of interventions with the RTI and the instruction we followed, the common core, and we monitored that for its implementation. We instituted the extra math and some summer programs in math as well. When we look at the achievements, we supported our learning community, Extra and Above, with a transition to the K through 4 elementary school, which really worked nicely for the Deacon's school. This year, we had the actual care program at our school, the box and extra math and intramuros and tutoring that was also there. Student achievement was monitored very closely by learning walks and by the new teacher evaluation.
Okay?
Okay. Good evening. One day in one of our administrators' meetings, we were looking at the schedule on how we were going to present our school improvement plans. And I said, "I think we should do it all together." And they looked at me like I had three heads, and they couldn't believe it popped out of my mouth. So we set up a framework, and and I have to tell you that I certainly saw the administrators' gel, work together, and create this product that we're going to be showing you. Everyone has ownership in it. And what we based this on were our four pillars: literacy, mathematics, technology, and safe and secure schools. What we have done and what our administrators have done is it will be a continuum of services from pre-K through twelve, and we're all focusing on these four pillars. So, not that I know how to go backwards, so we'll just skip right over to this. What will happen will be tonight, each each group will review their FY thirteen, fourteen plan. We'll be happy to answer any questions. And then we're going to move into the FY fourteen, fifteen plan. And at the end of the presentation, every school will have covered the four pillars, and it will be moving from one level to another. So without further introduction, we'll start with East Early Childhood Center.
Sure, thank you. So as a goal, all of the teachers, each had a classroom teacher completed the goal of at least seventy-five percent of the preschool students either being able to match, recognize, or name symbols, color shapes, numbers, or letters. And every teacher made that goal. And then as a school, we participated in year-long activities that included families, teachers coming together to do a book study, and then implementing the things that they've learned throughout the year in different projects. And we had projects that included the community members as well.
When we look when we take a look back at DECA's and we realize the work that we had to do this year, what we did is we created the school schedule to accommodate ninety minutes of research evidence-based Common Core instruction for each child inside the school. And also, we have an RTI block of forty minutes for literacy. We looked at the developments, the Common Benchmarks, and using the Edwin System, and we put those into place. And each child in every grade level had a Common Benchmark once every approximately six weeks. We started off with the grade and the G made as well at the beginning and end of the year. We received the PD from DSEC and Close Reading and Differentiated Instruction, and of course, our new reading series, REACH. We implemented the expanded vocabulary in the REACH, and we progress monitored. When we look at mathematics, again, it's the same type of interventions with the RTI and the instruction we followed, the Common Core, and we monitored that for its implementation. We instituted the extra math and some summer programs in math as well. When we look at the achievements, we supported our learning community, Extra and Above, with a transition to the K through four elementary school, which really worked nicely for the DECA school. This year, we had the actual care program at our school, the box and extra math and intramuros and tutoring that was also there. Student achievement was monitored very closely by learning walks and by the new teacher evaluation tool. We also met each week, the DECA's administration team, to discuss how we were going to, you know, improve instruction in the classroom. Technology was also, the addition of iPads, NOOCs, and Chromebooks. And the safety climate was improved with shelters in place. We had a couple of smoky fires at the beginning of the year, which helped us practice evacuation. And we also had some lockdown drill practice. New for this year, the two thousand fourteen, fifteen School Improvement Plan, we're going to continue to implement the REACH program. We're going to do a walk to read, tiered instruction with extra support to supplement the lack of having interventionists. Students will go to a reading group where they will be with peers at that same level for that particular time. We are adopting the writing across the curriculum. We're following that up to support the middle school with that. And leadership's close monitoring of teaching and learning with the rigor, Common Core alignment through the benchmarks and differentiated instruction. When we look at mathematics, we're going to have actually the same type of implementations and strategies. Not too much is going to focus, with the exception that we're going to look at the Common Core for mathematics and make sure that we closely align the daily instruction with the Common Core. Again, that will be monitored by the benchmarks, monitored by the beginning of the year and end-of-the-year assessments, and also the RTI data that comes out. For technology, we're going to continue to track our repairs and what's necessary in technology using a Google form. We found that to be very successful this year. We're also going to solicit proposals for updating our wireless ability inside the building. And we're also going to solicit proposals that will assist in our readiness for the PRC assessment. So at the DECA school, we're going to be the K one and two, but that means our children have to have a lot more technology knowledge than what they've had in the past. We want to be able to support that for grades three and four. We will continue with the whole district PD in in technology, software, and data management systems, and the social media, to be able to share ideas with other school districts across the state. For safe and secure schools, we will address and continue to address the non-academic needs of students which are growing by the day. We will look at the student's social-emotional growth, the effects of trauma on young children, and the child development concerns of our teachers, that teachers have and parents. School administrators will continue to use discipline data and all sorts of data collections to guide the implementation of the PBIS program, which we started this year, which was successful. And school administrators will also try to solicit a proposal for keyless entry system so that we can match what the high school has, and use the swipe system. We will also update central office with any plans that are necessary for building improvements or renovations of an emergency nature.
Okay, we can stop here if you have any questions about DECA's that you would like to ask.
Mr. Flaherty?
Good evening. Just these school improvement plans are usually developed with the help of the school councils, right?
School council.
I'm surprised none of them are here tonight from all of these schools.
I had my school council meeting this week, this week, and we also had one last month. And it must be a very busy time of year, because I could barely make a quorum for the past two months. So.
Yeah, and it wasn't really directed at you. It's just, I mean, there's how many schools are represented here tonight, and there's no membership from the school councils. But that's just an observation. Can you describe the REACH program a little bit?
Sure. The REACH for Reading Program, and I can I can get some input here, it's a it's a real emphasis on nonfiction. And when we look at National Geographic, we look how engaging all of those things, all the magazines we used to read when we were younger, they've brought that actually inside the classroom for instruction. The focus of the Common Core really relies on nonfiction, and children be able to read nonfiction and determine the difference the difference between fiction, nonfiction, related to science, and to integrate social studies as well. So when we look at the REACH for Reading Program, it actually is an interdisciplinary reading program, which takes into science, real life, hands-on. It also takes in social studies at the child's educational level, and that would be true for grades K all the way up through four or five. It's very colorful. Children love the program, and it's quite rigorous. And it's also tiered.
Thank you.
I meant to mention this before. I'm going to digress a little bit. If you notice, we've moved things around a little bit, and those refreshments are not just for the school committee. So anyone that needs a glass of water, a cup of coffee, whatever the case may be, that's until it runs out, that's for everybody to share. So I just wanted to make that announcement. So it's a little kind of felt guilty having it behind the curtain all the time, you know? So it's out there for everybody. Anyone else have a question?
You don't get that at select meetings.
Mr. Swett.
Hi, Mr. Swett.
Good evening. Two questions. You stated PBIS was successful. Could you tell me how you came to that conclusion?
We used the data. We used the discipline data. I took the discipline data by month, and then, of course, we did it for the year just recently so that I could have a breakdown. The only little glitch that we have in the data is that the assignments of student categories has changed a bit. But when I look at the school from last year, I do have that data which I'd be willing to provide to you. And I look at the students that are repeat offenders, and I look at bus slips, I look at assaults. We can have a whole bunch of categories that we can go down. We see a decrease in some areas. We see an increase in some areas. We investigate that increase and see, well, is this one student that is a repeat offender, or is this throughout the entire school? When we begin to see a pattern that perhaps maybe there's five or six children that have repeated patterns of behavior, then we integrate more of an intensive plan for intervention. And so a lot of the data we know is circled around there, so we try not to skew the overall results of the school. When we look at the satisfaction, when PBIS was instituted, we instituted PBIS in two or three major areas, one of them being cafeteria, the playground, and the hallways. And we had some structure and some protocols that all teachers and students would follow. So we look at how well that was adopted inside the school. And if we could hear children say that, and if you walk through DECA's, you can hear the teachers say, "Are we ready to learn?" You know, "Are we acting responsible?" And so all of those things are all indicated, but we look at the hardcore data as well. And that's what drives.
So to you, it was conclusive that it was successful?
It was. Once you tease out, I mean, if you just took numbers and looked at them, you'd say, "Oh, my gosh." But you have to tease out the data, and you have to know what you're looking at, and and once you do that, you can see.
Second question is, what percentage of your kindergarteners are coming from East?
This year, we have approximately, I think it was a hundred and eighty-six, and it was a sixty-five or a sixty-eight, so.
About a third?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you, if you compare the results of East Wareham students to those that didn't come from East Wareham, I mean, they might have had a different.
That's been done.
It has been done?
Yes.
And can you share those those results with the committee?
I will. I don't have all that data with me right now, but I will share that at a later date.
That would be an interesting, an interesting dataset to examine. I would I would love to see that at some point, Madam Superintendent.
It was done last year, but I will do this year's for you as well.
The more data, the better.
Yes.
Anyone else on the committee? Yes, Mrs. Vugan.
So this isn't just for DECA's, but I think it's important to probably say it here as we're.
Rodney, can you move your microphone, please?
How were the four pillars chosen?
They were collaboratively chosen.
Collaboratively chosen. So the question that I have when looking at this is, you know, one, from a technology standpoint, are we continuing to implement power schools and the parent involvement when it when it comes to being able to go in to power schools and see how their children are doing in the elementary level? I know it's something that we've been working on, but it's not there yet.
Well, last year.
We had to take a little.
Step back.
This year, we were training our fourth grade and fifth grade. With the reconfiguration, I'm sure we will pick back up on that. But right now, it hasn't come to the forefront. I think it's probably fair to say that once parents and children get used to the schools that they're going to be in, the K one and two, and then the three and four, that that will be something that we'll return to. But I know last year, last spring, we had parents and guardians in, and we demonstrated what it looked like in the fourth grade and what it could look like in the fourth grade, and people were very excited about it.
Okay. I think that where my concern is, is that the four pillars that you guys have come up with, I think are great, and it's a it's a straight focus to curriculum, to schools, what happens in that school, the kids, the partnership with the teacher, all of that is just great. The what I found just lacking a little bit does have to do with that our schools becoming good community partners. And so community partnerships that include goals around parent involvement and that that outreach. You know, we want it the other way, absolutely, but, you know, for us to be able to really think about how we do become a community partner, power schools to me is one of them. Other, you know, things that that the schools are already doing, just the whole community partnership is not really in the four pillars. What I was happy about was that the behavior and being able to work with kids around non-academic issues, that's in safety and security. So that was one of the things I wrote down, but it's in there, which is great. But there's just that other piece that I just find lacking throughout the board. So it's just something to wanted to be able to find that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, move on.
Okay. We're now moving to Minnet.
Good evening, everybody. So for the review for Minnet Forest under student achievement, we had the REACH program K to four. We were very fortunate this year where we bought the curriculum materials for grades three and grade four. We already had K to two. So now we have a continuum, K to four, that we were able to work with this year. We also continued our interventions with students. We didn't have as many staff members available, but we did provide tier-three services, which was a pullout for our students. In math, we continued with our everyday math, K to four, which also now goes up to the middle school, so we can see that continuum working there as well. And one of the incentives that I loved this year that we continued and we brought to grade three was the Big Shebang. That's the math incentive program. When students pass their math facts, they get to call home right away, celebrate, their picture goes up on the Big Shebang wall. At the end of the year, they receive a medal. With new Common Core standards, you have to master your math facts in grade three. So last year, we did it in grade four. We brought it down to grade three as well. So we have grades three and four Big Shebangers. And then we also had care and tutoring that were also after-school activities where we gave our students support. For technology, we were very fortunate where the grade-three teachers all had new Chromebooks this year, and every teacher received at least one NOOC, since we did have some extras available. Some teachers requested that they have a second one where they could use in their classroom with their students. We have wireless access points in the building, and that has been great for us. For the community, we do a lot of work in the community where Stop &amp; Shop has been supporting us with their A-plus bonus bucks program, and we were able to receive a check this week for over nine hundred dollars. So we were very grateful for that. Target Red Card also provides money for us. We haven't received that quite yet. We take field trips. We have people coming in. One of the exciting things this year, we did a pilot program for our grade-three, was that the students went swimming on Friday. So they had a seven-week program, and every Friday, they boarded a bus, they went swimming, they came back, they loved it. So that was wonderful to have that connection with them. Under resources, we worked to realign our schools this year. When we sent grade five to the middle school, we reconfigured the building so that all the grade levels were together. K one were on the bottom floor, two, three, four were up on the top floor. For new goals, under literacy, we're going to continue our reading program, continue having our interventions. We, as Mrs. Panerisi said, do this walk-to-read program. We've done it in the past a couple of times at Minnet Forest, depending on the grade level, and we found that it did work, so we want to institute that again, so that all grade levels are doing the walk-to-read program. And for preschool, they'll be implementing what they call Teaching Strategies Gold, and there's various standards that the teachers will have to do observations in, and that will cover the literacy as well. For math, again, continuing with our everyday math program. It's aligned to the Common Core. Of course, all of these issues, we'll be working with the new curriculum director as well. Continue the Big Shebang that I just talked about, and the Teaching Strategies Goal for preschool also will cover the math area. Safe and secure schools, our social-emotional program, we're going to blend the two programs that we have. At Minnet Forest, we've used Open Circle. At DECA's, they've used Responsive Classroom. A lot of the same principles and strategies, so we'll be trying to blend that together. We will continue with PBIS. We will, at Minnet Forest, we have a weekly goal for all classrooms to meet. So we may say, "Today, we have to meet ninety-five leaves." And if the classes meet ninety-five leaves, the name goes into a drawing for a raffle for a free recess. We also have given rewards to teachers as well, who can show respect, responsibility, and kindness. We also will do the keyless door system for security. We've submitted our first application to be reconsidered for the Mass School Building Authority. And for preschool, Teaching Strategy Gold has one of their standards to address this as well. And I know preschool has used Second Step, so they'll continue with that. Technology, we're going to borrow the form that has worked very well at DECA, so we'll be using that. Continue to update our wireless, our infrastructure. We know we need more students on the computer to get ready for PRC. I'm going to be having a technology teacher next year, so I want to have some more research projects where the children can come down to the computer lab, research the information, and then write about it. We know we have to give professional development to teachers. We had workshops this year that worked very well. We would like to continue that. The preschool teachers all have iPads, so they can use that for the Teaching Strategies Goal assessment. And they also would like to purchase additional apps where they can use that for the students. Questions?
Questions for the committee? Yes, Mr. Flaherty.
You really caught my attention with update MSBA application materials. What is that for?
We are starting the process over again. So I worked with Mr. McMillan, and we've submitted our intent that we are reapplying for the application process to renovate Minnet Forest.
To renovate or add to?
Renovate and expand.
Yeah. The same as before?
Same as before. The needs are still there. The plastic is still on my windows.
Yeah. No, I applaud your optimism and ambition. I also saw that you had progress on dibbles and other benchmarks. And could you elaborate a bit on that?
Right. So we're just now getting all the data. So what I gave you was hot off the press. Let me just pull that up. And we're still dibbling even as we speak. So I believe what I put in here was some of the things that we saw. It's really, it goes into depth if you look at the school improvement plan, but as far as dibbles, let me just find that for you. All right, so for, so in dibbles, what we have done and what we've done for tier-three intervention, the grade-three average point growth had increased from fall to spring in oral reading fluency. It went up twenty-four point four seven points. For the grade four, the average point growth from fall to spring in oral reading fluency was twenty-five point nine two points. Now, you'd have to have somebody that sat here and went through all that and what that means, but that was a nice growth that we saw with our students in the grade three and four. We're still giving dibbles right now to grade one. We'll have more data available, but we had finished the grade three and four at that point, so we were able, I was able to get this in to show how we showed improvement in the literacy area.
And did I hear correctly, or do I infer correctly, that you base a lot of that success on tier-three intervention?
Tier-three intervention helped. Now, I lost four part-time interventionists. I never got those positions back.
I know.
So I used my full-time reading interventionist, I used my Title I paraprofessional, and then the instructional leaders, that part of their position. We were working with children. And the special ed teachers are also part of tier-three in RTI, as well as the classroom teachers. They're doing the tier-one and tier-two.
Now, I read something from someone who clearly didn't understand what interventionists do. And in short, it's safe to say that interventionists are teachers, right?
They are teachers. They're working with our at-risk students, the students that need the help.
And they're very good teachers. That's why they're in that role, right?
Yes.
So if someone says that we should fire all of the interventionists, they're saying that they want to fire teachers, right?
They're all teachers. They're all under the teacher contract.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Swett.
Evening.
Hello there.
You mentioned that you are focusing on preparing the Minnet Forest Schools' technology for PRC. I'm sure that's that's a challenge, but I'd like to focus on the teaching and the instruction associated with preparing students for PRC. When New York State implemented PRC... When New York State implemented PARC last year, maybe it was this year, anyway, early, their results literally were cut in half. The percentage of students that passed English and math dropped in half as a result of going from their state association, not association, their state standards test to PARC. Our student representative two weeks ago acknowledged that she felt, and I'm putting words in her mouth, but I'm sure she'll correct me if I'm wrong, that she had been educated in the Wareham School system to pass MCAS. And they did such a good job that she got a perfect score. But she also acknowledged that the PARC test was dramatically different and more difficult. Your school next year will be, all of the students who are in third grade will be in your school, and they will be taking apparently MCAS, but a year later, PARC. So we'll have a year to prepare our students so that half of them don't fail. I'd like to know, Dr. Panerisi is shaking her head that I just made an error. Is that incorrect, what I just stated?
I should say, but basically, when we talk about PARC, we're talking about the Common Core.
Yes.
So the implementation of the Common Core is already in process. New York may not have implemented Common Core like Massachusetts has. Our students have been receiving Common Core, which they should be able to pass the PARC test. There's an expectation that if we're teaching to standard of the Common Core, that the PARC test should not be an over-challenge for the children.
I hope you're correct. I suspect that the New York State teachers thought they were doing a good job, too. But, so my question is, is there any difference in the way a teacher is instructing a class today as compared to two or three years ago, so that they are better prepared to handle critical thinking testing as compared to MCAS, which is primarily testing knowledge and other types of non-critical thinking skills? And if you could be as specific as possible, I'd appreciate it.
So what we did this year, one of our early release days, was we had teachers going in to take one of the PARC assessments, because we wanted them, some of the samples that they have. We wanted them to see what it actually was like and what it was calling for. So when a student says, "My teachers prepared me for MCAS," a lot of that is test-taking strategies and test-taking skills. You know, when you're looking at the questions, what is the question asking you? Why is the word in bold letters and so forth? So they do prepare them for test-taking skills. In order to take the MCAS, as Dr. Panerisi said, that comes right from our frameworks. So we're teaching to the frameworks with our curriculum, and that's what is being tested. So if a student does very well, then congratulations to that person. It's because the standards in our school have been aligned to the Common Core. Now, was there a change? Were teachers surprised? Yes, because they are getting into more critical thinking. They are having to go back into the text to get more specific information, and it's like more of a two-step process than just a one-shot question deal. So there is changes. It will require some test-taking strategies. We're not teaching to the test, but we're teaching children how to take the test and how to do skills. That's one of my focus for next year, having a technology teacher, is looking at that. Having those students do the research projects ahead of time so they can get the information that they need in order to answer questions like that.
Your colleague has a comment she'd like to add.
One of the things that was noticed by Ms. Shaverhood when she did walk through the schools was that we did not have essential questions posted on the board, nor did you hear instructors talk about essential question. In other words, what's the big question that we're going to answer with all this work and studying and all the lessons that we're going to be teaching? So both schools made sure that that was implemented inside the classroom, and that teachers went back to that essential question with their instruction to constantly remind students, this is why we're learning, this helps us answer the big question. I think that made a big difference with really making the connection from the staff, realizing that we had to up the ante, that there was more rigor involved, and that everything was connected through that question. It was very helpful.
This committee will have to make a final decision regarding PARC versus MCAS before October 1st. Is it, is it your, now I'm talking to the elementary schools, is it your, well, I guess I'm really talking, sorry, Kristin, really talking to you at Minnet Forest, is it your belief you need an additional year before the PARC test is implemented?
I would like that additional year, absolutely, to show our students the growth that they're making, the improvements they're making with MCAS, but then to prepare them for test-taking strategies that may be different from taking an MCAS test to a PARC test. If we go strictly with PARC the first year, and they've never had those test-taking strategies, that could make a big difference in their scores. So I would like to have another year.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on the committee?
I do.
Go ahead. Ms. Dugan.
First, the Big Shebang is all that's being talked into my household right now, because he's going into third grade, and mom, it's hard, and mom, but he's all excited about getting into the Big Shebang. So again, it's one of the things that I hear from a lot of his friends, that it's a great program and how the kids, their challenge, but how much fun it is, so.
And that continued this year because of a grant from the Foundation for Wareham Education. So they gave money for Mrs. Antonellis, who brought that to us. So we were able to purchase the additional medals for grade-three this year.
Great. Well, it's definitely, it's something that kids are either scared to death about, about third grade, well, now, third grade, or they're really excited about it, which looks like my son.
Bless you.
So one thing about the school improvement plan, so going in a little bit deeper, and I think that the administrators that are here probably heard me say this every single year, that when it comes to the plans, first, we move to a smart format, which I'm really, I continue to be happy about, because it talks about the measurement. But I think that we keep moving away from what that tool is actually for, which is data-driven measurement. And I continue to see, just again, us kind of pulling away from it. So when we're talking about some of the things that we're going to implement going into next year, being able to have a benchmark, or basically a goal that is tied to a percentage. So when we talk about things like, school staff will address non-academic student learning factors, such as social-emotional growth and development. I know what we're talking about, it's what my comment before, which was about behavioral issues. And so if, I would love to be able to see these school improvement plans include things like, we are going to decrease in-school suspension by this amount. So having a true measurement, all of these are the things that we're going to do to make sure that we achieve that goal, but putting an actual number in it for every single one, whether it's increasing test scores, decreasing behavioral issues, implementing technology, what percent of the teacher is going to be, like, let's get a number in there so then we can shoot for it.
I understand what you're saying, and I had used that in my evidence that showed that we had met that particular goal.
Right. Okay. The other, no, that's the only one I have, so, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Anyone else on the committee? Go ahead, Mr. Flaherty.
Just back to the point about the progress on the benchmark testing. Do you get any sense, now, that's to both, both elementary schools, do you get any sense that you're gonna, I ask this every year, that you're gonna see, do you think that you're, the progress you're seeing is gonna be manifested in the MCAS scores when we get them this year? In other words, I mean, do you expect scores to improve on MCAS for this year?
We always expect them to improve. And even though we had diminished resources, we still worked the best that we could to provide those intervention supports for our students.
Well, no, I just ask because a lot of times, we get this good feeling, we get all this benchmark testing, and then we get the results, and it's like, what happened? You know, so, I mean, you have a good feeling? Based on the data?
I'm going to have a better feeling next year when I have all the third grades together and all the fourth grades together, because we can make sure there's consistency across the curriculum, the teachers are all together, they're collaborating, they can be reviewing lesson plans and rubrics. So I absolutely love the fact they'll all be together, and then we can just monitor everything all at once.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that, too. And on that same, on that same tone there with the third and the fourth grade together, I remember when, last year, when we were discussing putting the fifth grade here in the middle school, that one of the positives that Mr. Gilmore had said is that, you know, now the fifth graders are gonna actually get a letter grade, right? And yeah, I love the letter grade, a lot better than a P or an S, or, you know, how they do it in the elementary schools. And I was wondering, is that something that maybe we should now consider in the third and fourth grades, now that they're together? Is there any, is it better to go that route versus what we do now in the elementary for the grading system?
Well, we're doing standard spaced report cards in the elementary, so it's difficult to assign a letter grade, because you can't average the standards.
Okay.
We actually, in talks about a new report card, so we're working on that. So for future reference, we changes coming, but not to letter grades.
Okay.
I'll ask the last question in this group, then we'll move on. No, it's not a question, it's just a, kind of a comment and a question. As you know, I work for UMass Boston, and I'm in the inner city an awful lot, and I'm observing student teachers and practitioners across the city of Boston. And it is amazing to me that, of the classes that I observe, now, I know that they're getting a grade from the university, so obviously, they're putting on their best face for me, but the way they're integrating technology into their lesson plans. And it is amazing to me that every classroom, and this is the city of Boston, in the inner city, in Dorchester, Charlestown, that every classroom is equipped an LCD projector. And it is used. It is used by the students and by the teacher, that they have access to the internet. Every classroom has access to the internet, and every student has the ability to use it as part of the lesson. And I know, see, this is one of the kind of the things, I didn't want to bring up the negative, but I know that this was one of the areas that we were going to use an infusion of cash if the override passed. Well, it didn't pass. So basically, I guess on a scale of one to 10 of what I just described, where is Minnet and DECA on the continuum?
Yep. So Dr. Panerisi's saying they have it in every class. So at Minnet, this technology, whether it's a Chromebook or NOOK, we have several classrooms that will have the in-focus machine, and they are projecting in the classrooms. I walk into a third-grade class, the REACH for reading is right up there, and the students are following along. Some of our special education teachers have it. Grade-four uses the technology, Promethium Board. So sporadically, we have it throughout the building, but one of our focus is to try to get more technology so that they can use it.
So on a scale of one to 10, in terms of integrating into the lesson, a daily lesson, where are we?
Depends what you use for technology. An overhead can be technology.
No, 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 I'm talking about internet. I'm talking about, you know, using, gathering information, an easy gather of information that we're using in the classroom, using the technology to enhance a lesson. Where are we on a scale of one to 10?
I'd say we're probably at a four, depending on the teacher and if she has access to the in-focus machines. The teachers are going online to gather the information from, to use in their lessons. But we don't have the technology for every classroom.
Okay. And again, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but that was going to be one of the areas that we really use that infusion of cash.
Right.
Okay. Well, you know how important it is. I mean, I'm gonna preach to the choir, so we're just gonna keep moving forward. But I think that every classroom should be equipped on that, it should be part of that daily lesson. And you'd be surprised in using the technology, both as part of the demonstration or as part of the lesson, and the interaction of the students, that it brings, it makes it that much more indelible for those high-level thinking skills, because what they have to do is they have to interpret this information in different forms and create products if it's an authentic assessment. So I think that it is so important that we focus on this, and not only in terms of the infrastructure, but in terms of training our staff to really use it adequately. And I think that that's probably a combination of the needs that we have right now. Not only do we need the infrastructure, we've gotta have the stuff, but then we have to have a staff that really knows how to use the stuff and use it effectively with the students. Because I'll tell ya, those kids know how to use the stuff. They have no problem whatsoever using the stuff. So anyways, I just wanted to make that point. All right, let's move on.
Mr. Chair. FYI, their spending in Boston is 16%
Oh, I understand.
Above foundation level.
Yeah, I understand. I do understand that. You have to have enough money.
I just think that you all need to be worried, because him talking about technology, it better be in there. I mean, this came a long, long time for him to finally get here. So if there's any teacher or administrator in your building that is having trouble with technology, you just need to point him in that direction over there now, because he...
Well, I played dumb, but I brought technology to the high school many, many years ago.
I know. I'm only joking.
I know. Okay. Let's move on. Middle school.
Good evening. So just a summary of achievements for the middle school for this year. We added fifth grade, and in spite of some trepidation that we had about making the building a quarter bigger, I'd say it was a successful addition. We actually did recess successfully, and I can tell you that there was only one student from the fifth grade that did not qualify to be promoted to sixth grade, and we had minimal discipline in that grade. And I really enjoyed being around the innocents that the fifth grade, fifth graders brought to the building. For professional development, all of the core academic teachers and the special educators in the building were trained in RTI. And we also, you know, added learning walks into our routine. Learning walks being a little bit different from evaluation, because in learning walks, thanks to Dr. Marks, who brought it from the school system, we were able to look at trends. And to look at trends and to, and actually had teachers leaving their classrooms to go into other classrooms, which doesn't happen, you know, with the regular evaluation system. A lot of times, teachers talk about feeling very isolated, and the learning walks helped people to get out of their, out of their subject areas and sometimes out of their grade levels for the first time in their careers. Tier-two interventions for math and ELA were successful. For technology, we have, we employed iPads in two seventh-grade classrooms, again, on one team, and Chromebooks were introduced into a grade-six, grade-six team. For safety and climate, we had PBIS, and I'll go on record as saying that it was not as successful as we wanted it to be. We are gonna fine-tune it for the year coming up. And part of the reason for that is there was one grade level of kids and teachers that embraced it wholeheartedly, and we have to go back to the drawing board to figure out a way to institute PBIS so that it's embraced and it's inclusive for the whole building. And we are working on that. And we caught up on our fire and lockdown tells this year, and I can tell you that we had a lockdown about a month ago, and I walked through the D-wing of the school, and it was like there was not a person in the building. So I consider that to be a huge success. God forbid if we ever had to use it. For moving into literacy in terms of our goals for this year, we are going to reintroduce writing across the curriculum. It's something we've had in this building in the past. What happens is that there are writing samples that are done in every subject area, schoolwide, every, every grade level, and the format for that would be six plus one writing, so that it's not just seen as writing that the language arts teacher focuses on. These writing assignments will be done, as I said, every subject area, every grade level, and it will also support the portfolio initiative that we have. We're going to go back to having school-wide writing prompts quarterly, where we, the entire school devotes itself on a day of instruction to writing. And the prompts will be appropriate to the grade level. And I think it's a very powerful message to the kids. The only other time we really shut the building down is for standardized testing. And this is a way to say to the kids, you know, this is this important to us. And again, it takes the onus of that part of literacy out of the responsibility of just the English teachers, the ELA teachers in the building. RTI, again, is, what we're looking for is a more surgical approach to how we approach intervention. So, but by that, I mean, we had reading and literacy, and we had, you know, a class where students would go in because the schedule said that they were supposed to be in the room. Now, we're going to try to look at, a much closer look at determining, you know, scheduling cases, they're in a room, in a group, where their needs are being taken care of, regardless of where they are in the spectrum. And part of the theme for the middle school is non-traditional educational experiences, and what I want to ask of the staff is, what is traditional? Because I think that in many ways, traditional has not got us to where we need to be. And by traditional, I mean, you know, putting packets on a desktop for a kid or a handout and assuming that this is going to challenge them to think and challenge them to use higher-order thinking skills. So non-trad- So non-traditional is going to be something that we're going to look at as a positive, a philosophical approach, if you will, for next year. For mathematics, all of the math teachers in the building, in addition to special educators, are going to take a school-wide mathematical summer institute that's going to kick off the last week of June going into July. They'll be guided by the Common Core standards for math for individual grade levels. And I can tell you that in interviewing staff members over the last couple of months, one of the things that I continue to hear is that we lack consistency in our approach to curriculum and consistency in our approach to discipline. So one of, one of the, one of the themes for next year is going to go back to finding some consistency about our approach to instruction and to how we handle discipline. I know that that doesn't have to do directly with math. But again, and to go back to the non-traditional educational experience, how do we approach math instruction beyond just talking to kids? With, with, in terms of PBIS, I can tell you that with discipline, that we are going to have a two-pronged approach. I think that I've spoken to almost every teacher in the building one-on-one over the last, over the last several weeks. And I think that discipline continues to be a challenge for us. I think part of it is certainly that we need to have a uniform approach to discipline. And to look at it, you know, from both angles. Both from the point of view of figuring out a systematic way to reward kids that they'll buy into, and then a systematic way to approach discipline that's consistent and that's thoughtful. And in terms of the final goal, we are making progress in the building. Partially thanks to Mr. McMillan. We've had somebody in the building for the last several weeks going through every computer in the building in our computer labs. So we will have a computer lab up and running with every computer working for next year. We will have, you know, again, Chromebooks in the sixth grade. We're expanding the use of iPads to include the entire seventh grade instead of it just being, you know, with two different classrooms. And we're going to go out on a limb here, but we're going to try with eighth grade. We're doing research right now to figure out a way that we can allow kids to bring their own devices into school. They all have them. And we're going to try to figure out a way to utilize that to enhance instruction. And I'm sure nobody has any questions.
Oh, don't bet on it. Questions from the committee? Mr. Swett?
Hi. Welcome. I went to a conference a while ago. And I was surprised that I was, I ended up talking to a district that consisted of just a high school. And it had covered a large geographical area. But one of the remarkable things he said to me was that every student that came to his school was, was evaluated for whether they were ready to come to his school. And much to the chagrin of their parents, the students' parents, sometimes they weren't. And they were sent back to their other district and told, you're not ready. So my question is, have you ever been tempted to send a student back to any of the elementary schools and say, you're not ready?
Good luck.
I'm not, I'm not tempted to keep students in the grades that they're in, to be honest with you, Mr. Swett.
You're not tempted to...
I'm not tempted to retain kids in the grades that they're in, unless I feel that it's in the best interest of the child.
So even if they're not ready, if a student is not ready for the fifth grade now, what do you do?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a complicated question. I think I have to look at the whole child. And I have to, I have to be able to define with the help of the parents, the teachers that have dealt with that child, the administrators, the guidance counselors, determine what not ready means.
But I think you probably have a real good idea of what not ready means.
Sometimes, Mr. Swett, not to get into a philosophical discussion, but sometimes not ready can mean an immaturity. Sometimes it can mean cognitively that they're not ready. Sometimes it's a social situation, so it's a complicated question.
It's intended to be. But with the reconfiguration and the great success of the high school, we're a level three district because of our middle school. You know that, I know that. And this, and I'm trying, and I don't know the extent to which we're a level three district because the students are coming to you not ready? Or whether when they get there, they're ready, but then we don't do a good job with them? So the answer to that question is critical. So it's intended to be a tough philosophical, practical question, because I think the lady next to you has no intention of remaining a level three district for very long. So do you have any thoughts about the best way of making sure that you make that lady next to you very happy as soon as possible?
Easy, easy question. Well, you know, my faith, Mr. Swett, is on systems. In other words, my faith is in giving teachers the materials that they need to do the job and supporting them. And part of that is the evaluation system to make sure that they're, you know, that we're holding them to high standards. Part of that is having a consistent approach with children in terms of our expectations for them. I mean, it's a complicated question. Would I like to see us, you know, not have to have this conversation a year from now? Absolutely. And we're going to work in that direction, I can promise you.
I'm optimistic for you, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the committee for the middle school principal? Mrs. Huguen?
Hi, good to see you. When I read this, one of the things that I was really excited about was the whole concept of non-traditional education. And the excitement of being out in the community and talking about things that we voted on meetings ago, which was, one, the dual enrollment, so being able to, eighth graders being able to take classes in the high school, as well as the new STEAM Academy. So those two pieces, I think, are generating a lot of excitement. But of course, we have to prove ourselves, we have to, because when you take a look at our district, it's where a lot of the mass exit is, is happening. So kids are going to our elementary school, and they're saying, I'm out of here now. I don't, I don't trust the high school, I mean, the middle school. And so I applaud the, even if you want to call it the, the way you're going about it, which is, we are going to be a non-traditional educational institution, because those kids actually, that age seems like it's going to resonate with them also. So I applaud that. The question that I have, though, is all along the way, what are you going to put in place to evaluate whether something is working and helping you achieve? Because something like this and the idea behind it is great. But at the end of the day, speaking to Mr. Swett's point, we have to get out of level three. We're done with level three. And so what are you preparing for going into next year with some of these non-traditional educational experiences? How are you going to look at them on a quarterly or even monthly basis to make sure that we are moving ahead?
Easy question.
Dark.
Well, I think the, I think the answer lies within a consistent approach. And I also, I also believe in the staff that we have at the middle school. I believe in setting short-term goals for the staff and supporting them in, within those goals. I think part of what's happened in the middle school in the past is, is kind of a disconnect between where we want the kids to be and where we place our emphasis. And by that, I mean, we've had a schedule that has included classes, that we've had kids in classes. For example, we've had classes where we group the kids together to fit a schedule as opposed to finding them where they are and trying to move them past that point. And certainly, having kids in the dual enrollment addresses that. And our challenge this year is to find the other kids that are non-in dual enrollment and to address their needs. And I think certainly through, certainly through intervention, you know, we're going to look at test scores. We're going to find out what the kids' needs are. We are going to surgically go after those needs and to try to address those needs. I think there's communication with, with parents is key. And I certainly think that that's something that we can improve on. And I, and that's a phone call at a time. It's certainly with, you know, certainly with inviting parents into the situation as opposed to just suspending a child out of school. I'm going to get into discipline, because I know it's something we need to improve on. I think it's a conversation at a time, and I think it's, it's building a bridge with those parents. It's, it's a hard question. I don't think it's going to be an overnight thing, but I do trust the staff that I have in the building.
It does lead into the next question, which is, when, when I am, the biggest complaint that I had, that I hear about the middle school is the behavioral issues. That this is, they, you know, yes, there are some issues, like they're one-off, but that there is a, there's a feeling that there is a consistent problem in the middle school when it does come to what's going on in the classroom and the behavioral issues that are going on there, and that the middle school is not addressing them. So the, what plans, I mean, consistency is one. What other ways are you going to go about addressing that piece? Not only, even if it's just a perception, dealing with that perception out in the community. And I don't care so much about that, even because once we start doing it, then it'll come back around. But that piece is so important, because that's probably one of your biggest barriers of implementing any kind of non-traditional educational experiences if you're having these barriers, which is our, which are behavioral issues.
Another easy question. Well, I think the approach to discipline has to be whole school. I think it has, there has to be ownership on the part of every adult that deals with kids. And I think there has to be response on the part of the administration to help staff that struggle with classroom management, for example. And to address that through the evaluation system, not to just be putting out fires, not to be just reacting to situations. To work with the guidance counselors and the team chairs, to speak with families and get to the reasons for the misbehaviors or the reasons for the disruptions. And it's, it's kind of, it's a special challenge. But I do know, coming from many years of teaching in the middle school, that I was always fascinated if you took the same cohort of kids, and you would find that some teachers had next to no visible discipline issues with those children. And a teacher down the hall might have everyday issues. So I think part of it is going to be in a uniform approach. One of the things I can tell you is that having different principals in a building over a span of months does have an effect. I mean, the kids have to know that there's a sheriff. And the kid, and the staff needs to know that, too. There has to be consistency.
And accountability.
And accountability, and people need, I mean, we're wired, and the kids are no different to know this is where the buck stops. But I think there also has to be an emotional support component to that. And certainly to try to figure out, in some cases, why is this a problem? As opposed to just being punitive.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just, so the PBIS that seems to be a common theme going throughout, is there a coordinated effort between all the administrators that the same practices that are happening in one school continue all the way through? And I just mean, I just don't mean the program and how it's implemented with children, but also how the staff is implementing that, not only the, not only the students, the school, but also the staff, how they're part of it, and there's a consistent approach to that also.
So I think, I think PBIS is, is a piece of the puzzle. And I think that this year, certainly, we were excited at the beginning of the school year going into it. We're going to be smarter about how we approach it next year. I think we're going to be more conservative about, about how we approach it. And I think we're going to try to make it appropriate for each grade level.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Flaherty?
Good evening.
Evening.
I appreciate, I appreciate your candor on PBIS. I think I heard the elementary schools had some better success with it, right? But my, my son is now in the middle school. And, and I haven't heard a positive thing about PBIS at that school from him or his friends or parents or anything. And I discussed it with, you know, some educators who I trust their opinions on and such. And, and, but they seemed to think it wasn't going better than you do. But what I, what I gathered is kind of what you had alluded to, that it wasn't very uniform, you know, the way it was applied here. But when you said that, when I, if I heard you correctly, that there were certain staff that didn't have buy-in, right? That certain staff didn't apply it or chose not to.
Well, I, I think that we need to narrow the focus.
Well, is that, is that right?
Well, I think if you're a teacher of a fifth grade student as opposed to a teacher of an eighth grade student, you're dealing with, you know, emotional components, maturity level that's vastly different. So that you can get a room full of fifth grade kids extremely excited in one way that an eighth grade teacher is going to be less successful. So I think that as a whole-scale approach, it needs to be something that fits every grade level.
It's just, whenever, I'm probably speaking for everyone at this table, but whenever we hear that there's not buy-in or there's people aren't on board, they're not team players and such, it's like, it's like fingernails on a chalkboard. It's like, you're, you're, you're not doing what? I mean, this is our system that we're, you know, supposed to be improving our school? And, you know, individual teachers decide it's not a good idea. That, that's just what sticks out in my, in my head. But, but again, I appreciate your candor, and I, I trust, like you said, you know, multiple principals, sheriff in town, all that. I mean, it will be different next year, thank God. Question about the library. Do we use it at all?
We, we use it all day long.
Who's we, students or staff?
Students and staff use it all day long. It is not used as a resource for books as you would expect a traditional library to be used. Some, there are some books that are brought. And that's happened since we, we've had, I haven't had a librarian.
I asked my son, you know, how often does he go to the library? He said he's never been in the library except for when there's book sales to buy books.
Right.
What's up with that?
Well, I, I think, Mr. Flaherty, part of the, part of what we understood about the fifth grade kids in terms of it being a school within a school almost, that we did want to kind of keep them in a cocoon, so to speak. And we do have an eighth grade team in classrooms right next to the library, so I think that might be a factor.
Is there any better use we can have for that space?
We could fill it, we could fill it with technology.
Fill it with technology? I had an interesting...
I'm all for that.
Well, I heard an interesting idea, and it might even tie in with PBIS, that maybe you turn it into a little internet cafe, and it's like a little, you know, reward. You know, for people to go there, check their email, get a little hot chocolate or something, you know? That that would be a lot better than just books collecting dust, right? Something like that. And it wasn't my idea, and I don't want to say who it was, so I don't know if they want me to mention it publicly. But I just thought that was a great idea, honestly. Rigor. Academic support block, what is that at the middle school?
Academic support block, as we know, it will not exist next year.
Why?
Because I think, to go back to the idea of targeted interventions, we're going to make best use of that time if we find the child's where they are, you know, where their weaknesses are, where they need remediation. And that includes the child that's, you know, that's very, very accomplished in everything. In other words, we want to be able to challenge that child as well and to use the time for that purpose.
Good.
And we know, and I can, I can tell you from many years of experience, anything that's akin to a study hall or a study period in middle school, I haven't seen it work.
And that's, that's kind of why I ask. I mean, my son came home with more homework, coming home from Deccus than he did from the middle school. And he says he just does his homework at school. And that's fine, I guess, and we'll see what happens, you know. Hopefully, his, his performance, you know, is as good as it's been coming out of Deccus. But I, I wonder about the rigor, and I at least, I'm happy to hear what you're saying for next year, but I'm concerned about what happened this year.
Point taken.
And then you mentioned, you mentioned, bring your own device. Quote, they all have them.
They sure do.
Do they all have them? Oh, isn't everybody?
The vast majority do. I'd say it's beyond the vast majority. I know 15 years ago, I saw a child going by with a cellphone riding a bicycle, and I was astonished. Now I'm astonished if a child doesn't have some kind of device. There are school systems within Massachusetts in middle schools, not too far from here, that have kids using their own devices, and they're successful. So that's something that we're going to continue to research.
I'm in favor of it. I just, you just always hear, like, you know, what about this poor kid that doesn't have it? And, you know, you have to understand, you know, whatever, 30% of the students don't have internet at home or something, you know? That's, that's just...
Yeah, and we would need, need to make accommodations if that were to be the case. We couldn't obviously leave a child out.
I think, did I see Ms. Rotella with a hand up? Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
You done?
Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair. 15 seconds.
All right, because he hasn't answered yet.
It's okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Literally 15 seconds. I just wanted to note that it speaks well of Mr. Minkel, that two members of his leadership team are in the back, and I appreciate you being here.
Go ahead, Mel. Yosa?
Yep.
Sure. I've got a couple of things. I'll, I'll wrap it up for you, Dan. No more questions for you.
Thank you.
After me. You might, you might not want any.
A couple, I, I think that one of the things that I really enjoyed, what you said, and it's in the, in the new plan, is the regular scheduling of writing prompts. Let me lay another part of it on for you.
Okay.
Those writing prompts take on incredibly new meaning when they're collaboratively assessed. All right? It puts, it puts a whole total different emphasis on it. So when you do these writing prompts across the board, all right, and you put a team of professionals to assess them, given, given the rubric, all right? And then you go back and you look at these results and compare, and compare the assessments or any notations that they may, they may make on the product, you'll get a whole different perspective, not only on the students' work, but also on the attitude of the professionals. So I think that when you do this, if you could add another component to that in terms of collaborative assessment of the writing prompts, I think you'll, you'll get a real wealth of information that you don't have when it's not done that way. However, I was a little concerned about one of the comments that you made, and it was about, you know, talking to your staff and assessing your staff and talking to the folks, that they found that there was a lack of consistency in instruction and curriculum. Good God. We have dumped time, effort, training in assessment, instruction, curriculum. We've got common assessments, we've got benchmarks, we've got all kinds of stuff, and these professionals have team time, or they've had team time.
They have.
How is it that there's no consistency in instruction?
Yeah, I, I don't think, Cliff, that it's an either-or. In other words, I don't think that there's a complete lack of consistency with instruction.
Well, I'm just using your words. You said that.
I don't believe I said there's no consistency with instruction.
You said, "In talking to the staff, there was inconsistencies in instruction and curriculum." I wrote it down as soon as you said it.
Well, I, I, let's look at the tape. What I would say to you-
And if you misspoke, that's fine.
No.
But if you, I hope you can understand my perspective on this.
Definitely.
Given the time and money that we spent on the middle school in terms of materials, training, benchmarks, common assessments, you name it, we've done it. So go ahead.
So, so what I can tell you that we have in place at the middle school right now is we, we have, we have an administrative team, we have a superintendent that supports us, all right? We have, we have an instructional leader who is, you know, beyond compare, in my opinion, and there is absolutely no reason why we can't address that.
Very good. That makes my, that puts me at ease. And then the last thing, obviously, is I think the new teacher, you brought it up a couple of times, a new teacher evaluation is a good tool. And I think you're going to get a lot of information as we implement it and, and improve how we use it and in terms of meeting the individual needs of the students, but also, you know, a, a higher degree of accountability in terms of the staff. So I think that that can be used positively across the board. But bottom line is, they still need tools, material, and the way with all to use them.
Yes.
So, and we'll continue to work on that. But as I said before, you know, I'm, I'm a little disillusioned that we, we didn't get that infusion of cash to really increase our technology capability. So thank you very much for your efforts and, and good luck, and anything I can do to help you, you know I'll be there.
I do.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
Oh, are they all getting up?
Last question.
Oh, I just wanted to, no, I just wanted to commit. Oh, they're switching up.
Yeah, they're switching.
Just before they finish, I want to-
No. Okay.
Mr. Flaherty, you thought we were leaving before I had a chance to speak?
Exactly.
I thought you were all getting up. I'm like, whoa, hold on.
No, we're not done yet.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'd like to start off with some of the highlights that we've accomplished this year at West Academy. Kind of off the script, I would like to share how proud I am of our graduating senior. For the first time since I've been at West Academy, we had a senior who wrote many college letters, got accepted into a college, and he was able to partake in the awards night at the high school, and he received five scholarships. That was just incredible. He was an incredible young man. He was the young man who came here and spoke before the committee during the school year, so. And that is really, kudos to him and the staff at West Wareham Academy. They work very hard with, with our students. This year for literacy, we really tried to incorporate more direct vocabulary instruction and reading comprehension. We were able to, it's amazing to use the Google Chromebooks and the Google Docs. Talk about motivation. We have students who, before that, didn't want to write, and now they're writing complete essays using the Google Docs, and the Google Docs have proven to be extremely useful. Teachers are able to give the feedback immediately on a student's writing. To improve our math skills, our students are receiving an additional 50-minute block of intervention. The intervention is honed in on specific targeted skills. The team looked at the MCAS data, determined where the deficits were, and created intervention blocks based around that. To expand our community, I was able to host two coffee hours. We had at least 20% attendance, which was a grave improvement from in the past where I've had maybe one or two parents who, who attended. We've also had our open house with 20% attendance. And this year we did something a little bit different. We had three recognition award ceremonies, and they were so successful. We had 50% of the parents that came out and supported. We had a lunch in for them, the kids made food. It was, parents were really happy, and they got to see for the very first time that their, their students were doing really well. We also did something, we added a portfolio expedition to exhibit, to the award ceremony, where students had been working on their standard-based portfolios, and they were able to go back into their classrooms and show their parents their work samples, and, and our parents actually coming out crying because for the first time they saw that their child was actually completing classwork. And to integrate technology along with our Google Chromebooks and our iPads, and we're very fortunate that we're a very, a small school, so we're able to utilize a lot of technology within our classrooms. We also use technology in our school store. Students learned business skills this year. They learned how to do spreadsheets for ordering, the inventory accounts. They learned how to do online job applications. They were very successful at completing them. A couple of students actually went on their own afterwards and have jobs now, so. Those are some of the highlights of this year. Moving into next year, as you know, that the cooperative school- Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I jumped off the cafe.
So the review of the goals from this year, student achievement, we, the way our schedule's set up, we have a core academic, an hour-long class, and then they have a core enrichment, some other time during the day that may match that class. For instance, they have science, and then they may have robotics that connects to that class. In the PM one and PM two, we expanded our online lab with Edgenuity and the tutoring program. With technology, we had a district technology day, which was very informative for teachers. We also used the Chromebooks, which were new to us this year, and Google Docs and, and Student Gmail, opened up opportunities for teachers to communicate with students. Partnerships, we had over 50% of parents attend both the day school and PM two school open house, which was a, a big turnout for us for the night school program. And we also had parents from both programs on our school council this year. And for safety, we also use the PBIS framework. I, I think as the framework is interpreted and worked with in different schools, it works a little differently. It's, we use kind of a behavior point sheet. We offer incentives for attendance, we give counseling with students. So PBIS, I, I know there's a conversation about it as it works through each school. I think it works a little differently as it is just a framework for students and staff.
So, now moving on towards next year's goals. Let's start off with the improvement of student achievement and literacy. Our goal is to provide students with ongoing opportunities to develop language and literacy skills at varying access points. I think we talked about that a little bit in someone else's presentation, when you know a child is ready. I think because we're so small, we really have that opportunity to be able to personalize instruction for students. So that would be one of our, one of our goals for next year is to, to increase that. Also, to provide students with literacy-rich environment with real-world connection and experiences. Our students really do much better with hands-on type activities and making those world connections. Also, we want to implement the writing across the curriculum, like the, across the district, it seems to be the common thread, to implement the, the writing across the curriculum and use the, utilizing the six-plus-one writing traits with a focus on the nonfiction writing. And to improve student achievement in mathematics, excuse me, there'd be a focus on lessons that foster math literacy and by teaching, direct teaching of the math vocabulary and continuing on with fluency measures and open response questions. We would, we also plan on having our teachers be able to collaborate and identify essential standards of learning and be able to share and reflect on the assessment data which is collected. And in addition, we, we're going to provide additional math achievement, sorry, enrichment for students who are already proficient.
So the safe and secure schools, because our programs are a little smaller, what we do is we establish individual goals for students, and then they meet in groups and are counseled on their goals. And teachers also keep track of student behavior and academics within each class. We'll continue with the trauma training and restorative practice training. We are also going to utilize SWISS, which is, was the data part of PBIS. So what, SWISS is Schoolwide Intervention System. So what that does, it, it gives you an actual read on maybe a certain behavior of a student is occurring at the same time every day. For instance, we had a student who, and, and we didn't really notice right at first, but after looking at discipline referrals and point sheets, there, after lunch, there always seemed to be some kind of issue. So we wondered if it were even a medical issue, that the student with just having, you know, lunch, that the energy level increased. So to have like individual data of where occurrences are happening, or where students are together and they're happening, is very valuable in setting up a, a plan for a student. Also, it helps to, with the teachers, it helps to either strengthen or weaken the inappropriate behavior. So we look at consequences, we look at teacher approaching students and, and how we can improve on that interaction. With technology, we received a gift this year from Cape Cod Five, so we are going to be able to purchase additional technology, and we'll continue to use Edgenuity for academic support in online classes and credit recovery. We also, this year, thanks to Jamie, we have our public service announcement, which I guess is technology because it'll be on TV, but we've already had some calls from, from students who have left school. In fact, it'll probably expand the program because we were getting a lot of calls from students who are in their 30s and 40s, so.
Okay. Let's not complete the presentation for you guys. All right, thank you very much. Committee? Anyone? Mrs. Dugan, won't we start with you?
Yes, sure. One of the things that you mentioned was the use of Chromebooks. The Chromebooks that are being used in your schools, are they, have they been used with students, or is it just still at the teacher level?
Oh, no, students are using them.
Okay.
They're implemented in, right in the classroom.
Okay, no, that's good to hear.
Kids are writing, using the Chromebooks, and teachers are, are also on and giving feedback, and we have it up on the info, and it's, it's pretty incredible.
Okay. So going into next year, we're talking about different things that are due to the override not passing, and so we're moving. How are you currently preparing students that they're going to have a new home?
So I've sat down with students and, and had a conversation with them, framed it really in a positive way, that this is a way to, for them, for us to have more resources and, and combine some of those, some of those resources and, and open up our opportunities. Kids are really accepting of it. You know, at first, I think kids were a little, the students were a little leery. They, they were seeing things out in the newspaper, you know, and hearing different, different kind of gossips, if you will. And until there was a definite plan, I really didn't want to sit down and talk with them till I, till I knew some real information, because I'm very honest with our students. And I think that that's part of the reason why I'm very respected by, by the students at, at West. So I think, I think that we're having those ongoing conversations, and, and they're doing okay with it.
Okay. And the combining and-
Some of our students will be transitioning back to their sending school. I haven't really, we, we read the article in the Wareham Week, but we were kind of confident that we would be going to the multi-service center in January, and then we'd have more time to prepare and pack.
Okay. You, sorry, just real quickly, that with some of the non-traditional educational experiences that are going on in the, or planning to go on in middle school, are you, are there opportunities for students in each one of the schools that are middle school level to learn about those programs? I'm talking about STEAM, I'm talking about dual room, and being able to see if maybe they will, they would fit into that program.
I, I would say yes. Programs that are offered at the middle school and the high school, I can speak for West, I can speak for Co-op, have always been offered to the students. And actually, last summer, my students did participate. I had a group of students who participated in the, at the STEM Academy last, last summer, and they participated in that. So it's always been offered.
Okay.
Actually, we have our own little STEAM academy going on at the Co-op.
Love it.
And we, and we did last year, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we have chickens.
And we have chickens.
We have chickens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Flaherty?
I just wanted to say, you know how at the beginning of our meetings, we, we have these videos of all the kids, and lately it's, you know, reflections on their school year, what was the most memorable moments and such? And, and some really, some really good stories up there. But I got to say, you know, this past year for me, the most memorable event or thing that happened came out of the West Wareham School when, when Jared Spironi was up here, and he gave his story, and he was so candid about it, he was just so inspirational, and, and how special that school is to certain kids in this, in this community. And, and a lot of people don't understand it, you know, but, but it just, I just felt proud to be a part of that. proud to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you. And that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you for giving them the opportunity to come here.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Mrs. Swett?
Kathy, how unique is the cooperative in the Commonwealth?
How unique?
Yes.
I think it's.
How many comparable?
Alternative programs?
Yeah.
I don't know the number offhand and I know that the type of program differs from city to town. I, I know when I've gone on the, the DUCY website with the state data and asked you to find a comparable school, there, there are a lot of schools that are called alternative schools, but there are sometimes charter schools and, and I don't know how many are exactly like our program with a diploma program, with a night school program, but I can find out.
I'm just wondering what other, since it appears that you are relatively unique, I wonder how other districts are coping?
We have had other districts come look at our program in the past. And I think with maybe the new discipline law, we'll have other, other districts inquiring as well.
But, but your enrollment hasn't dramatically expanded.
No. Well, in, in our day program, we really did not have room for expansion with, with the numbers we have. In, in the PM program, no, it's kind of stayed the same, but I, I think that has to do with getting the word out there. Because I know that a lot of people that I've spoken to about the program, that even in other districts, even though we have sent them brochures in the past and, and have talked to guidance counselors, sometimes we get calls from parents and they say, "We never knew this existed," even in Wareham. So I'm hoping with this PSA that we get the word out there.
So you consider your day program essentially at capacity?
The building. The building size. But I think when we move, I haven't really been to East to evaluate the space, but I think when we move, there will be room for more students.
I'd be interested to know your conclusion when you've finally been able to acclimate yourself to the space. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lazarus?
Thank you. I want to commend you for what's going on at the cooperative at, at West. And I remember a number of years ago, Mrs. Rotella and I worked on the grant for that school and there wasn't much out there in the way of modeling. And I don't think there is yet much in the way of modeling ours to someone else. And I think that what we've done and what you've done with that school, you deserve an awful lot of credit. And I think that people do look at that school as a model of what a cooperative school should look like. And it's one of the real stars that we should give to Mrs. Rotella because a lot of it was her brainchild. And the first grants that were written, she wrote. And I'm very happy it was done, especially being in the high school and having kind of a, a place to go, if you will, for students that were at risk. And it seems to work well and I'm hoping with the new accommodations that we'll have room for more students. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Rotella.
Thank you. I just want, just briefly, I want to thank you also for what you do. I want to congratulate you and your graduate. And I also want to, you know, you know how I feel about the cooperative graduation, it's kind of like the height of the, the height of the year. I really enjoy those kids. So thank you both for what you do and the service you provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're doing good. You kidding me? They're doing good. It's not even nine.
They used all their allocated questions.
No, not even close.
Okay, so just reviewing last year's school improvement, we're excited for the recreated Core Math and Core ELA, which takes students that are identified as at-risk for MCAS purposes into an extra program. We implemented the MMSI program for our AP students and the professional development, both for the students and teachers. We implemented the SAT prep course, which has been a requirement, as you remember, we sought approval through you folks last year for that. We did improve technology and I certainly want to recognize the volunteers that we had pulling lines to make sure we could be as close to 100% wireless as possible. We're able to actually do a, basically an eighth of the school that we wouldn't have been able to do without those, those folks volunteering. So they took the labor away from, from the folks that were installing and we pulled the wires. So we're close to 100% wireless safety. We purchased 12 additional cameras from the class of 2013 to increase our safety. We also have the Rapid Visitor Check-In Program, which has been outstanding. And we required all students this year to wear IDs and we're starting to outfit our school with some proximity locks that will be fully implemented next year. Right now, we have the front door only. As you heard from me a few weeks ago, we addressed all the NEAS concerns and we hope to, and actually, I'll get to that in a few minutes, but we do hope to be off of the warning status in less than a year based on the three recommendations that I outlined, I believe, at a previous meeting. So our goals for this year, literacy, we want to create a literacy curriculum, create common assessments, incorporate PACH-style assessments, DDMs, formatives and summatives. We want to train the staff and do a crosswalk when this is implemented so that they can increase these into their repertoires. And we're also excited that we have four AP ELA, excuse me, pre-AP ELA teachers that are going to be involved in AP training over the summer and they have volunteered for this, so we're excited to have them in the program and to have a true pre-AP program. In mathematics, we're going to try and mirror what we're going to look to do in ELA with the curriculum committees, the creation of the DDMs, the PACH-style assessments, same thing, training for the staff, a little crosswalk and increasing their repertoire. We're going to train the staff on utilizing, or retrain, I should say, on utilizing the online supplementation that was provided for us when we purchased the textbooks. And we have one math teacher going AP training and two pre-AP teachers going to training this summer as well. And that's on their time. I want to make sure people understand that. They're not getting paid to go there. Technology, we're looking to have a second line brought in. For some reason, the high school, the infrastructure just isn't there and we're down more than we would like to be. It's not as bad as it has been in the past, but we're looking to bring in a Verizon line so we have a second source for the internet, complete the installation of the wireless, get us to 100%. And we're real close. We want to purchase Chromebooks or iPad carts with 30 devices in each for, one for each department so that we can rotate this around, infuse technology and be ready for the PACH assessment. Finish the installation of the LCDs in every classroom, that should happen very early in the summer, we're almost there. I know you, you mentioned that with Boston, we'll be there at the high school before we start school next year. And the most important thing, which Dr. Sylvia alluded to, is training the staff. It's one thing to have the technology there, but they're not going to learn it through osmosis. So we need to, at the very beginning of the school year, make sure we not only do the crosswalk for what, the work that we've done in the curriculum, but also make sure that we train the staff. We have some staff that you put it in there, they'll utilize it, but we also have to train the staff that may not be up on their technology. Safe and secure schools, we want to continue with the ID requirement, but also we're going to change from the IDs that we have, these are going to have the HID cards, which is the proximity cards, so the students can utilize those for things such as the bathroom, the library, the cafeteria, and also the nurse's office, so we can track visits to the nurse's office. We also want to put proximity locks on the gym and the custodian's doors so we can track who's coming into our building besides the front door, those are the other two doors that are more commonly used and when people enter the building. I talked about the scanner for the nurse's office. We want to continue to purchase security cameras. We are really excited about what we have for an infrastructure at the high school and we want to continue with that. And we do need to add a DVR recorder to support these cameras and continue to practice lockdowns twice a year.
You know, we're, we're pretty much on schedule because we're just running, no, actually, we're not over yet.
We're early.
But you really ought to take over the auctioneer's job for the Dec of Auction. That was really great.
Thank you, appreciate that. So I'm going to leave, we've got a great person in that position, I'm not going to surprise that person.
Oh, that was good. You did it all with one breath, that was amazing.
I was trying to keep you on time.
Are you ready or are you done with, I mean, with the presentation?
I'm done.
You're done? All right, committee? Start with Mr. Lazarus. Any questions?
Only one. How difficult is it going to be next year without a resource officer?
Good question.
Well, I don't know if that decision's been made on the resource officer.
No, hypothetical question.
I mean.
I think I already know the answer.
It makes life a lot easier when you have one, but I've worked in the system for 20 years and you were there for, close to that, and there were many years where we didn't have one. I'd like to have one, but we still have a job to do whether he or she is there or not.
Mr. Swett?
Am I to conclude from this, that if you said to your assistant, "Where is such-and-such a student?" That because of the chip that's embedded in their ID card, regardless of where they are in the building, you'll, you'll know where they are?
It has that capability, but we wouldn't have the infrastructure at first, but certainly that's something we would have down the road. But right now, it's more proximity. But I would argue if I called the front office and my secretary, if the child was out of the, out of the classroom, my, my secretary would be able to tell me where that person is based on the security system that we have in place.
Interesting.
We couldn't, we did a lockdown the other day, we couldn't get the person in the building. We had some, a lunch, lunch worker stopped the person before they got about 20 feet into the building, a teacher, when they got up to the top of the stairs, and then the secretary, who was watching the cameras. So, you know, it does have that capability, but we're not, we wouldn't be there yet. It would be a few years before we could do something like that.
Tell, tell me about the dual enrollment program.
Sure. What do you want to know?
It's called dual enrollment. You're a.
You're a good actor. How many people were enrolled? What was the process by which they were enrolled? And, and I'll think of others as you're talking.
So just for clarification, because we do have two dual enrollment programs.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about the middle to high.
Okay, thank you. So let's see, so the process, we, we presented, Mr. Mickle was great, allowed us to come over, we presented to, to different groups, they were split in half, I believe, silver and blue, all right, I've got it right, silver and blue, and great kids.
Not, not gold and blue?
They'll get gold when they come to the high school. But it was two great groups, we did a great presentation. We then did a, for the students, we handed out information about a parents' night that we were going to have. Mr. Mickle sent out an all-call to all the seventh grade parents that we were having this presentation. We had a great audience in the auditorium. Applications went out a day or two after that through Mr. Mickle at the middle school. We had over 60 applications and we accepted 41 students. We were looking for 35 and we were going to stay at 35, but the rubric scale from 35 to 41 was less than a half a point separating those, student 36 to 41.
So you had a rubric?
We had a rubric that we evaluated the, the whole application and it was, I mean, if the seventh grade is any indication of what's going to be coming to Wareham High School, it was unbelievable, unbelievable. And, and we've had a chance to meet a lot of the eighth grade students who are involved in athletics and it's, the future is very bright in Wareham Public Schools.
So you're saying the gap from 41 to 42 was significant, but 35 to 41, so that's why you took 41?
Correct.
And that to keep the chairman happy.
Which we were hoping to stay at 35, because let me just tell you, it's tough to schedule 41 students in your, in your schedule.
It's tough to turn great kids away.
Right. I guess it's a good problem to have.
Yes, exactly. And finally, pre-AP teachers, could you elaborate on exactly what makes a pre-AP class?
Sure. So it's just an increase in rigor. It's basically a pipeline for students to be ready and to be exposed to AP-type curriculum and to be ready to take AP. It's not necessarily, some people think of it as, you know, it's truly an honors track, you know, they do the honors in eighth grade, ninth, I'm sorry, ninth grade, 10th grade, and then 11th, they start to get into AP. That's, that's one kind of version of pre-AP, but it's really increasing the rigor in those college prep courses so the student could jump from, say, an English 10 college prep to an AP course at the 11th grade, the language and literature class.
I'm still a little confused. We have CP honors and AP, right?
At the, at the junior and senior level, correct.
Okay. And what do we have at nine and 10?
College prep and honors.
And where is pre-AP in that, those two categories?
It's interwoven into the college prep and honors curriculum and we're trying to increase the rigor by exposing these teachers to this type of training and we're also going to then be exposing the students to increased rigor and they'll be doing DBQs and different problems that they would see in AP classes.
You lost me with DBQs, but that's okay. But, so a CP class could be a pre-AP class?
Correct. Correct. And we actually have students who are making the jump from, and making it successfully as well, from the CP, and it could be CP Bio to, to an AP Bio down the road. So there's, there's a lot of students that are making that jump. We've opened up the doors for the AP students. Our goal is to get more students enrolled in the AP program so we have more qualifying scores and hopefully more students getting credit at the college level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flaherty?
Just building on what Mr. Lazarus had pointed out about the resource officer, through you, Mr. Chair, to the superintendent, I thought, and I know, when we did the FY15 budget, it was asked and answered that we had included funding for the school resource officer. No?
Partial funding?
I guess partial funding, but I guess our portion, I guess.
Our portion.
So I guess the, the big question mark now is whether or not, whether or not the chief has the other half?
Whether or not correct, if the town would have the other half and if they have the personnel now to free up. Because they were counting on having the money to send, send the officers to.
Right.
Police training, that's not going to occur.
When, when will we have an answer on that?
We're going to be having a discussion with the town manager here in the next week or so to find out if, in fact, this is going to be a possibility for us. If not, then we're going to have to reevaluate what we're going to do and how we will approach.
Can, can you report back to us at the next meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
Is that July 8th?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's all I had. But, but just to Mr. Palladino, just, you know, keep up the great work. I mean, you can't, can't say enough. Surprised, I didn't, I didn't want to bring it up, I don't want to be a dead horse, when you had the athletic director up there, I still want to see something about, you know, not, not filling any classes, but you guys were supposedly working on something about a new policy on that and I'd like to see that soon before the, the school year starts that we can vote on.
I'm sorry.
Something, something, something that we can vote on up or down.
I just think in fairness, you have to give the students enough heads up on the expectation. You can't just throw it on them and say, "Well, now you're not eligible for the fall because in an August school committee meeting, we changed the rules."
Well, whatever's, whatever's appropriate, but I'd like to, I'd like to, the sooner the better.
Definitely.
Mrs. Dugan?
I just want to start off by saying that I think it's an important point to make regarding the resource officer, that the funding, absolutely, that there's a portion of the funding that was put into this year's budget because of the importance of, that we feel of the importance of that position, but that it is not, that is not the deciding factor. The deciding factor is about staffing within the police department. This is not just about funding, this is about staffing. And because the override didn't pass, they have limited staffing there and they need, from what we have heard, they need every single police officer within the police force. And that is the main reason why they were, they had to pull the resource officer away from the school. So just want to make that clear again, that it is not just a funding issue, it's also a staffing issue. The, just the one other point, just comment, was around the NEAS report. And I said it before and I just want to say it again, that the way that the high school attacked that NEAS report and took charge and worked diligently to address those issues is just, just commendable and, and I think that you should, that that group should actually go and do a seminar about how other issues that we're facing right now should be attacked in the same manner, that it wasn't just, it's their fault or it's their fault, you basically said, "This is what's going on, we have to attack it and we actually have to improve." And so again, kudos to the whole entire staff that were involved in that. When we take a look at the school improvement plan, the survey that was done. the things that, one of the things that jumped out at me was the staff survey about how 47% feel that community members support teachers contributing to their success, that they don't. So you're talking about 53% that feel that the school community or that communities are not supportive of teachers. How are you looking to address that?
Well, I think the one thing that we're taking a hard look at is, we're trying to have the philosophy of we can only control what we can control. So certainly, we can try and work with the parents to get them involved. And support is measured in many different ways. It's not just like a vote from last night. There's other ways that folks can show their support. So we're hoping to really take a look at the parents and getting them involved in the educational process. There seems to be, no matter where it is, it's universal, a disconnect from sometime in the middle of middle school, obviously up and through high school. And, you know, that is a time when these students are making some very serious decisions, both in and out of school, that can affect them throughout their life. So we're hoping to try and continue to figure out ways to get the parents involved. We've had a few great presentations. We had our best open house yet, as I think all my colleagues have had. And we're just gonna continue to try and get the support through the parents, which we kind of have some control over, since they have a vested interest in Wayham High School. So that's kind of how we're gonna battle that.
I've said it to a couple people, but I'll say it publicly here. After last night, when I looked at the total vote count, and 1332 jumped out at me. So there are 1332 people, 1,332 people that voted in favor of the override. And I think that we actually need to start a campaign around that, which is the 1332 campaign. There are 1,332 people that are basically saying, "We want to make a difference in this town, and this is one way to do it." "We need to make sure that we're harnessing that power of that 1332 and telling them what the next step is." Basically, what's next if since the override didn't pass. The last thing is just around the school improvement plan. And I, again, I sound like a broken record, and I apologize for that. But when it comes to the tasks that were in here, just asking to go back and take a look at that. When I was looking at this, they were less to me around goals with true metrics, measurable metrics, and more like tasks. Like, "We're gonna form a committee, we're going to, you know, implement technology." To me, the school improvement plans are so important that basically allows us to evaluate ourselves at the end of the year. And that's the reason why having true measurement metrics are so important to me. If we're not gonna do them in this report, then I just don't think we should do it. We should just have high-level bullet points. That's our school improvement plan. If we're gonna use this tool, then we have to be as specific as possible of, "This is how we're going to implement it, and this is the percentage by which we're gonna measure ourselves," or percentage or numbers or whatever it is. So we can really, at the end of the year, we can say whether we achieved it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vugan. Nicole, do you have anything you want to add for the high school? I know it's near and dear to your heart.
I really like the idea of the pre-AP program, because I think so many students struggle with, when they do go into AP classes and they feel that they're not prepared for them, and they're so overwhelmed. So having something like that will prevent that in many cases. So that's a really good idea. So I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. I'll ask the last questions or comments. On the school improvement plan, Mr. Palladino?
Yes.
94.2% attendance. Is that gonna affect how we, that Level 1 status?
I don't believe so. There's other measures to maintain the Level 1.
I know it's supposed to be 95%, right?
Yeah, we've had some ill kids this year that, you know, and I get on the deans, because every month we review the attendance. We've had some sick students that have spent extended stays in hospitals, and we have above 5 right now that are out of the building. So it's, this was a tough year from a health standpoint.
That's okay, but 94.2, it's good. That's a good segue into my next thing. And we're talking about the resource officer, you know, I thank Mr. Lazarus for bringing that up, you know. But at least between other things, is I'd like to just ask you, and I'll make another, I'll make a comment after you finish. It becomes, at least from my perspective, it increases the importance and the efficiency and the need for the deans, not having a resource officer void. So the deans have been in place now for, what, about four or five years?
Four years. This is the end of the fourth year.
So how do you, how do you measure the effectiveness of the dean program? Particularly in light of the fact that you've got one of your elements as a void, without having a resource officer?
Sure. So, as you mentioned, it's huge having the deans. You know, for the fourth year in a row, we've decreased the rate of discipline. So, you know, that's exciting in itself. But also, you know, there's things that you can't measure with the deans. They're able to deal with a lot of the small issues, and obviously, Mr. Lazarus can speak to that, that you just can't measure. It's not gonna show up in the statistics right away. And it may have been a documented issue after the fact, or maybe it wasn't, but it decreased the stress on that student. So what they can deal with, it's incredible. They can deal with the minor issues before they become big. They're, you know, they're in the hallways, they're making sure, you know, everyone's taking care of business. It's huge, because they can deal with those issues. And they can, and they're also, you know, they can be proactive. And they can deal with things that don't have to do with discipline, they create relationships. I mean, I could go on and on all night on the benefits and the deans. It's been, I think it's one of the best decisions we've made as a team.
I do too. But I just wanted to hear it from you.
Definitely. And without the resource officer, it certainly helps us out to have, you know, a few hands on deck.
Right. Well, I just want to clear up a couple of issues, because I, you know, I know that I've been talking to an awful lot of people to get the override passed. And I went over to Great Hills, and I spoke to the senior citizens in Molnhoop Park, and I've talked to other groups, and the deans seem to be coming up as top-heavy administration. Let's clear the record right now. They're not administrators, they don't evaluate teachers, they're teachers that have a reduced load.
Right. And when we did the math when we started, it was, it cost us the same amount as an assistant principal, which we had in place at the time.
And you've actually had a decrease in administration at the high school, is that correct?
Without a doubt.
Yep, so. I know, I just, there's this misinformation out there that we've got this, all of these administrators running around the high school. These folks have a reduced load, but they teach classes, they're teachers. As a matter of fact, they give up their preparation period, do they not?
Well, they have preparation, whether they use it or not.
Well, that's up to them, right. But they have, you know, you didn't take it away from that.
Right. But they do a great job, and they're to be commended. Obviously, they're a big factor in being, you know, where we are today.
Right. And I think they do a great job, too. And they're really giving people. And they give a lot. So I think it's a really good program, and I commend everyone for putting it together. The, I'm nervous about Park. I really am.
Right.
For a variety of reasons. And I'm really kind of disillusioned, but there's nothing I can do about it, and good luck. I just think that, and I'll tell you the same thing in terms of doing these assessments. If you can, assign, take the name off those papers and put a number on it, assign it to a kid's name, and do a blind assessment on that. You know, and do a collaborative assessment, so no one knows the kid, no one knows the student, and to see how two or three professionals will assess the same piece of work. You can get tremendous, tremendous knowledge and input from that, so I strongly suggest that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to thank you, and continue the good work, and you did a great job on NEASK.
Thanks.
So, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, you know, I would just like to thank the administrators of Dr. Marx, Mrs. Rotella, Mr. McMillan. You know, they, everyone worked together in the collaboration to provide this document. It's a little bit different than what you've seen from the past. We felt like it was important to show how everything works, how we all work together, and how the system moves as one throughout, through the grade levels. So thank you very much for your patience, your understanding, and allowing us to present the school improvement plans in a different manner.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Quickly.
Yeah, sure. No, I just wanted to commend the group as a whole and the superintendent. When I saw the new format, I was pretty skeptical. I mean, we used to do two a night and then, you know, go past 10 o'clock. And I thought that was appropriate, frankly, because there was so much information. But using this new format, we went right through it, and I got to ask everything I wanted to ask. And if I had any more questions, I felt comfortable asking them. This works. You guys did a great job.
Thank you. Yes, I second that motion. It worked real well, and we're only running 13 minutes behind schedule, so let's move on. We're gonna have a discussion, a quick discussion about the status of the food service proposal. Madam Superintendent?
I would like to invite Mr. McMillan and Mrs. Perry to come forward to make the presentation.
Good evening, school committee.
Good evening.
At the last school committee meeting, we discussed the challenges facing our food service program and the need for action to address the budget deficit. And with your approval, we said we would investigate our options for balancing the budget, including outsourcing the food service program, but also looking at how we could do it in-house. So very shortly after that meeting, the food service director, who's here today, Debbie Perry, came to the superintendent and I, superintendent me, with a plan that she had developed with the middle school cafeteria manager that would make significant savings through restructuring the staffing of the food service program, reducing the number, overall number of staff, and also the number of hours. We were, superintendent and I, were very encouraged by this plan. And I have since worked with Debbie to complete the plan and ensure that it does, in fact, balance our budget, and we circulated it to you before this meeting. So in light of this, that we've been able to come up with a plan that keeps the food service program in-house while balancing the budget, we would like to recommend that we do not seek an external vendor, but instead implement this in-house plan, balancing our budget, working with our own existing staff.
Any questions on the recommendation of the administration? Yes, Mr. Swett?
First of all, I commend the document that the both of you put together. I thought it was thoughtful, complete, and really did address the concerns. And in my mind, it was a food service improvement plan, much like the principals and those people who have schools. I appreciated the fact that there was a desire to solicit the input from both teachers and students, because without a product that is wanted, it makes it really hard to achieve any plan. And I have gotten anecdotal feedback from students with whom I interact that suggests that they would like some input into the food, and that it would significantly increase the volume and the purchasing. None of what is in this document that really does impact the finances surprised me. I thought the assumptions in it were conservative enough so that I felt comfortable endorsing it. I do think it's a, I call it what it is. It's, it is a tragedy that the medical-industrial complex just continues to destroy lives with its high costs. Because that's, in essence, what's going on. And it's happening all over the country. And I could spend the next two hours talking about it, but, Mr. Chair, I won't.
Thank you.
But the truth is that we're doing this by eliminating benefits from people who probably could really use them. And yet, we can't afford to pay them, because they're too expensive. So I applaud the initiative. I am really pleased that we've been able to move in this direction. But I'm also saddened by it. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Lazarus?
If I may take, if I may take more than one or two sentences.
You can take as long as you like. You were very quiet tonight.
I tried. I spent two lunches at the high school. Dr. Sylvia and I spent a lunch at Deccus and at Minnet. And we were, it's the first time that I had had lunch at an elementary school in Wayham. And we happened to hit Deccus on hamburger day, so it wasn't too bad. But we were impressed with the fact that the children ate lunches. Now, the high school was different. There are snack machines within federal and state guidelines. But at the elementary schools, which we were both more interested in, the children were eating lunches, and they were eating the school lunches. And are they gonna hit a home run for every school lunch they make? No. But I will tell you that the children seemed happy with what they were having. And it was one of the issues that we weren't sure about, but I'm sure about it now. My only concern that I have right now is, when are we gonna post the jobs? If we're going to be in-house with this program, we've got a lot of people that took some incentives, and we've got to get some people on board rather quickly, I would think, so we can acclimate them to what they're gonna be doing. So I guess my real question is, in that we know where we're going...
Well, not yet. We haven't voted on it.
I understand. Assuming
Great.
That we know where we're going.
We would be looking to post the jobs within this week, by Friday.
Thank you. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to get it on the agenda for tonight, because I know we're pressed for time, and anyways. Anything else to be said? Mrs. Vugan?
I also want to commend the two of you for just, you know, it goes back to the comment about the NEASK report. So basically, you said, "There's an issue, we're all in together, we're gonna go, and we're gonna solve the problem." And you did. And I thought that the presentation also was very thoughtful when it came to how you're going to work to improve. And so the ideas around having the students come in and start, you know, that's amazing that you're doing it. It's like somebody at a company saying, "I'm gonna just have people come in on a daily basis and tell me about their product." I mean, but those are also going to be your best marketers to increase participation in the food services. The other thing that I thought was great was thinking outside the box and looking at ways that you can cater. I have seen that in other communities where it's not, I mean, I would even think bigger. So, you know, it's not just town hall, it's not just school meetings, but really putting together a simple flyer that people can order takeout lunches, you know, pay-for takeout lunches, things like that, in and around the area. That's the kind of thinking that I think is only gonna increase the bottom line of what you're looking for. The, the only question about the budget that I had had to do with the maintenance of equipment. So in FY13, it was at 28, then it was brought down to 5 last year, and then 5 going into this year. What was the big jump from a maintenance standpoint?
We had everything breaking down.
Okay.
Everything was just breaking, everything. And we have old equipment. We have a steam kettle jacket that is at Deccus that does not function anymore, because they can't get parts. In order to fix it, I need $20,000. And that's only replacing half of the machine.
And I see that you have one replacement of equipment. I think my only, that you have, that there's no buffer there. I mean, hopefully, well, you do have a buffer, the bottom line of $85,000. But, you know, if you had a $28,000 year, and I know you're shooting for just $5,000, but what if you have another breakdown year?
Yeah, and actually, we are in the process of applying for a grant that will help to
I'm applying for two breakfast grants, which I'm also hoping to get equipment within that grant.
Great. That's great news. Thank you again for all of your hard work on this.
Anyone else? Mr. Flaherty? When did this plan develop?
So, I mean, to be honest, the way I described it is kind of, well, you might be able to provide more information, but we've had, shortly after our meeting last, Mr. Debbie Perry came to me with this plan. And we met, I think it was a couple of Fridays ago, looked, went through it, and then sort of developed, sort of built up a little bit further.
It's just because when we originally discussed this, there was supposed to be a committee and RFP process and such. And did that committee ever get formed, to the superintendent?
No, we have not.
We never did, alright. We never did, all right.
Tragic, we lost a committee.
Yeah, no, I only ask, and I've mentioned this too, just that it's great that, you know, we're shopping the pencils now, but, but I wish we did go through the RFP process so that we could either, you know, do better or, or validate that we're, we're doing better this route. But now we have no basis for comparison, because we've just kind of like narrowly said, okay, well, this sounds like it'll work. Now, if it doesn't work, and, and we, we had to kick in from the LEA again, I think had we, had we, I guess the question is, if we, if we had outsourced, normally when you outsource and, and the company messes up, they usually eat the bill, right? So, if, if, if we mess up again in-house, you know, that's going to come out of our education budget again. And, and that's, that's sort of the reservation I have about all this, but it sounds like all the work's been done and it's been done responsibly. But I do, I do wish that we had some basis for comparison like we did with busing, because we can look at the, the RFPs and say, okay, yeah, definitely, this is the way to go, keep it in-house. We, we're not getting that this time around.
Anyone else? Well, I, I'll, I'll wrap it up again. I, I think that right now, we've had some time constraints here with everything going on at the end of the year, and putting together a proposal, and not only putting on a proposal, reviewing the proposal, getting somebody in-house for the opening of school, I think was probably going to be next to impossible. So, I think the timing wasn't good to, to do this right now. But what I would suggest is, do a mid, and this is just a suggestion, is do a mid, mid-year review to see where we're doing, how we're going, you know, if we're hitting our targets or whatever the case may be. And we can always go forward with the RFP purely for, for an informational perspective later on next year.
I agree.
And have the information early enough where we can make some educated decisions, and we're not, we're not, we're not bound by these, by the time restraints that we have right now, with school getting out and trying to, trying to know which direction we're going to go in for September. So, I think we'll have, this gives us a little bit more time, but it also gives our food service folks a chance to, to make it work. And we'll review, we could probably review it midstream, and then if we need to, in terms of reviewing these proposals, we could put it out if we want to. It's entirely up to us. So, I think that it gives us some options that we didn't have. So, without any further ado, I'd like to, to get a vote on this and, for a motion to accept the recommendation.
Mr. Chair, just the very last piece of this report talks about reporting monthly.
Monthly, well, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah. So, I think there's lots of reporting here.
I think so, too. Do I have a motion to accept this proposal?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. And then, any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the superintendent's proposal to delay the outsourcing of food service, at least for a year? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a point of saying that, that this decision, yes, we did talk about going out to an RFP, and I agree with you that we need to be able to always take a look at comparison documents. But I just want to be clear that this decision was not contingent on override passing or not.
No.
So, but I just think that that's important to say.
Thank you.
Because there was a conversation that went on about going to RFP. The food services team and Mr. McMillan came back and basically said, this is what, this is how we're not only going to balance the budget, but we're going to have a surplus in that. And this committee is making the decision to continue with that going into next year.
Right.
But it wasn't contingent on the override.
And the only reason, you're absolutely right. It was not contingent on the override, and the only reason we were doing it for informational purposes anyways, we hadn't made a decision whether we were going to outsource or not.
Yeah.
So, I think that, that's a very good point.
Thank you.
All right. So, you got it? We're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent, acceptance of gifts.
Okay. I would like the committee to accept CAPE Cod 5's gift of $5,000. This will be used to purchase technology to better assist a co-op school.
Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
I'm good today.
All right. School Committee reports?
The only thing.
Go ahead, Jeff.
No, no, go ahead. The only thing I'll note is that Mr. Flaherty and I met with the superintendent about the revision or development, I guess, no, it really is a revision of a background policy, and you should be seeing that shortly.
Thank you.
Background check policy.
Yeah, thank you. I know you had a meeting. You want to say anything on it?
I'm sorry?
CAPE Cod collaborative, you want to say anything on it?
No, I just want to say that I had a very informative meeting, and I was there for an inordinate length of time. And I have much more information than I know what to do with.
All right.
But it was very informative. I did go to the meeting, and I suppose I'll be going to those on a regular basis in the future.
Well, I want to thank, I want to thank the committee, all the folks in the committee that worked real hard on this campaign. And I know many of us put a lot of hours in, but I think Mrs. Vugan put the lion's share of ours, so thank you very much. And, and I just want to remind the committee on any other business that we do have a board meeting, and it's, it's not on a Wednesday, it's on a Tuesday, the 8th. And the primary focus of the meeting will be the superintendent's evaluation and using the instrument.
What time is our meeting going to be?
Regular time.
Seven?
Seven, yeah.
No, we need to be done.
Okay.
Just any other business.
All right. Does anyone else have any other business?
So, just one piece about the, the background check policy. Just to remind you again that I would love to be able to see the procedures from each one of the schools to go along with that policy, and I don't know if that needs to happen in the la, next one, or, but, you know, that policy around background checks is only as important, to me, is as important as the procedures of how we implement that in each one of the school.
Right.
Your concern actually came up during the meeting.
Okay. All right, great. Then, the only other thing, Mr. Chair, that I want to say is that he was here but then left, but the chair of the Finance Committee, Larry McDonald, he's now the former chair. This was his last meeting tonight, and I just thought that it was important to publicly thank him for his service to this town, his leadership in providing a comprehensive financial picture to the town and its citizens. But I just want to thank him for his service, and since it was his last night.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for allowing me to do that.
I think Mr. McDonald did a great job, as did Mrs. Donahue. She, she's retiring, too, so.
Yeah.
Those folks really worked hard in putting together a plan. Any other business at this time? Well, the only thing I have to say before we adjourn is that I looked up all of a sudden, and I saw the, a former chair of the school committee walk in, and the only thing that I can say to him is, he must be checking on me, or he doesn't have a whole lot to do. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you.